Okay, everyone, we're live and we're recording. I'm gonna go ahead and start the webinar so that attendees can join. So please have your videos on, but keep muted.
Okay, Harry, Charlie just got here, so we're getting, Jim is getting him linked up right now.
Happy to do whatever you all need.
Having minor technical difficulties here. Get set up.
Chloe, how many people had signed in to speak today?
Just one person.
Okay, we're all, we're all set up.
Can you do it so you, oh, I guess that's, so am I?
Yeah, is the view working for you?
I'm not.
Now you're muted right now, yeah, or you're clicking out to mute.
I'm muted. Yep. So Christopher, you let me know when you're ready and we'll get started.
Okay.
Thanks.
We're waiting out, Jacob is literally signing on right now. And Jacob, to kind of address the commissioners real quick.
So I'm gonna call the meeting to order now if we can. So the special meeting, November 2nd of the Planning Commission of Charleston will come to order. Christopher, I believe we have a quorum, correct?
I'm counting four right now, commissioners. But y'all aren't gonna make action, so I think we're gonna be okay.
Yeah, okay.
As we move along through the agenda today.
So the first thing we were gonna do is, I'm sure everyone read that Jacob had accepted a job. And we're happy for him, we're sad for us, because we appreciate the work he's done for the city of Charleston. When he signs on, he wants to give us a few words of advice, I believe.
Here it comes, showing up there. There he is.
Jacob, you there?
From his courtyard. There he is. Jacob, we were talking about you.
Yeah, Jacob, I'm glad you're here. We were gonna get some words of advice for you and congratulate you on your new position. You know, when, when Tim Keen got his job up in Atlanta, I'll never forget, I called him to congratulate him. And it was a Friday afternoon, and he happened to be in Atlanta, I think he was looking for a place to live. It was a Friday afternoon, and he was in Buckhead. And he said, wow, he said, I don't know what I'm into here, this is crazy. So it was bizarre. And I can just imagine on a Friday afternoon being in Buckhead with all the traffic. And here he is trying to get more pedestrian-friendly stuff going on. But we appreciate your work and thank you for your work and congratulate you on your new job. And we'd like to hear from you and hopefully you'll give us some good words of wisdom for the future.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, first of all, thank you so much. Charlie, it's been such a pleasure working with you over the years and your incredible colleagues on the Planning Commission. You know, it's, it's just been such an honor to be not just with this department, but with you all. And yes, I'm enjoying the last bit of temperate, temperate Charleston weather before we head off to the Rocky Mountains. So it's great to be with you and, and for you and for all your fellow Planning Commission members, I always say this, but I really mean it. Thank you for everything that you do for this city. This city is a great place to live because of the dedication of public servants like yourselves. So thank you. And for all y'all, I'm not going away forever. I got my phone number, you can all reach out to me. Okay, shall we talk comprehensive plan? Where are we here?
Real quick, real quickly, I wanted to say, Jacob, I remember the first time I met you, and you may remember, you may not. We were trying to get that, Donna knows too well, we were fighting the battle of the bridge, Asher River Bridge with bike and pedestrian lane. And I had some friends from the Jewish community that went out on the Greenway and took some pictures with their family, because they have to walk on the Sabbath downtown, which is a very difficult and crazy walk and dangerous walk. And they took some wonderful pictures of the entire family, which you arranged. And we won that battle at City Council, we're still fighting that battle now because of County Council, I believe, but it was good. And, and we'll move forward whenever you're ready, Christopher or Jacob.
Well, Charlie, I'll take it from there. And yes, of course, I remember that. I never in a million years can I forget all the great work that we've done, especially on the bike lane. And thanks to the collaboration of many people, the bike, the bike lane, the bike bridge across the Ashley River is gonna be built. So we are, we are making progress in that regard.
Right.
Okay, so what I think, what I think we're all here to do today, first of all, is obviously for me to just say thanks to y'all as I'm on my way out to Boulder. But second, I wanted to give you all just a few thoughts in regards to the comprehensive plan. I will be brief, as I try to all the time. I don't wanna belabor anything too much. So y'all are gonna hear tonight from some of the folks who are working on our comprehensive plan, doing the work of analyzing our housing markets and, and a lot of the variables around them. Before you get into that and you do a deep dive into that, I wanted to offer you all some parting thoughts. One of the, one of the wonderful things about being at the end of your tenure in a job is that you can say whatever you need to say. And I've always felt the liberty to do that. But in this case, a few key thoughts as I'm on my way out to Boulder. This, y'all know this, this comprehensive plan is unlike anything that the city has done in the past. And that, of course, is by design, but it's also because of the call that we have heard from you all, from mayor, from city council, as well as from the general public. It's clear that we live in a different time today than Charleston even five years ago or even 10 years ago. The world has changed around us. And there are two major issues that we have to face. One of them is climate change, and the other one, of course, is our incredible housing crunch. And those two things come together to make, for a whole big ball of wax, transportation challenges, employment challenges. It makes life in this place more difficult than it was before. And people feel that every day. So what that means in terms of this plan, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap here relatively quickly, is that when contemplating the future of the city, y'all, Planning Commission, are gonna be faced with a series of dilemmas and trade-offs and compromises. And to help make sense of those decisions, we have looked at these key factors that are influencing the city with some of the best people from around the world. That means working with Wagner &amp; Ball, working with the Water Institute, working with our incredible housing consultants who are using a whole host of world-class techniques that you're gonna see to give us insights into what's happening in this place, insights that we never had before. And the biggest takeaway that we are seeing right now from all this work, in the words of the brilliant Christopher Morgan, is that when it comes to the future of our city, business as usual just can't continue. We have got to use new strategies to protect the city from climate change, to grow in the right places, to add to our housing stock so that we don't become totally unaffordable, but to do those things in a way that makes the city better in the future for all of those who live here. So we've got to prepare for climate change, we've got to grow in the right places, and we've got to make quality of life better. Now, a couple of things, and I'll close with this thought, that you will hear from us and from the staff. When you see all of these new, all this new information, it's a lot to download. And don't be intimidated by that. What you're gonna see is that sea level rise and climate change are gonna reshape the city. And you're gonna see that people in our city are burdened by housing. We're gonna have to figure out how to help keep people in their homes, how to add more housing stock, and how to connect it all together in a way that helps people get around without having total gridlock and decreasing quality of life. That puzzle can be intimidating at first, and this is the key concept here. We do not, we from the staff, do not want anyone, the public, the Planning Commission, city council, any of our stakeholders, to feel like there is a sense of fear or anxiety about the future. We want to do the opposite. We are giving you all the best information we can get from the best people in the world so that you can make good, informed decisions. So when you see all this stuff, all this crazy information that we've never had before, what you all should do is have confidence that you have the information to make the best decisions, which is different than what we've ever had before. And to jump to the conclusion, I think everybody wants to know, what is the future of the city gonna look like? Because that's what this comprehensive plan is all about. We're at a pivotal moment, and you're gonna be making decisions about how and where we grow that are gonna last for a very long time. What's the worst-case scenario? The worst-case scenario looks a lot like New Orleans today. Let's say sea level rise speeds up. Let's say climate change gets worse, and we're getting hit by hurricanes on a regular basis. Let's say that we've got a retreat from certain areas. We call that reserve certain areas for sea level rise. And the whole thing is propped up by crumbling infrastructure behind barriers, some areas under sea level. That scenario for us is like New Orleans today. It's not optimal, but it's manageable. Now, there is a best-case scenario, too. And that's a scenario where we reserve areas where the climate is changing, places where we shouldn't be building, we say, don't build there. We reallocate growth to areas where it's good to grow, places like Canoyes, Sam Rittenberg, the Maybank Ridge, places where we know the growth is good, Laurel Island. We reconnect all those places with great transportation infrastructure, and we build the right kinds of climate-proof infrastructure to help us. Drainage to help pump water out, barriers that are actually great waterfronts. And we get ready and climate-proof the city, adding enough housing so that the market doesn't go crazy and people can keep living here. That scenario is real, too. And in that condition, we preserve our quality of life, we even enhance it. But it's gonna require a lot of work on everybody's part. Both of those things are likely in my mind and possible, depending on the choices that you all make and the choices that our elected officials make. And hopefully, this plan is gonna give you the tools to consider those choices and plan for the future of the city. So I'm gonna be quiet, I'm gonna get off my soapbox. I hope that's not too dramatic, but I think it's real. And I think that you all are the best qualified people to consider these options as we go forward. So with that said, I'll be quiet, I'll let y'all get some great info. And I'll, I'll take a question if you want to, otherwise I will sign off.
Thank you, Jacob, and thank you again. I'd ask if any commission members wanna have a word to Jacob?
I would, I would, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Donna.
Thank you, Jacob, for all of your guidance during this time. You have a fresh perspective, a young perspective. I think that's what's most important for us. A lot of us have been here a long time, and I think new and fresh words. I have a lot of family and friends in Colorado, so I'm in Boulder. So you're gonna enjoy that state, it's very, very much different. And oddly enough, during my studies for this comp plan, I read the new comp plan for Colorado Springs, because I thought it was kind of a completely different thing. So it's kind of, you know, funny that you're moving to Colorado now after I read that. We will miss you, and thank you for your guidance. And, you know, we might pick up, we might pick up that phone sometime, so save travels.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. Anyone, anyone else like to have a word with Jacob before we move on?
Yes, I'd like to just say, reiterate what everybody else has said, Jacob. You've been a breath of fresh air, and it's been wonderful to have you on the commission. I've been on this commission a long time, and I've seen a lot of, a lot of directors come and go. And it's been delightful working with you. And I'm envious of you moving to Colorado, but we're certainly gonna miss you here, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Ms. Lepus. Anyone else, Mr. Lassane? I always like to hear one.
Chairman, yeah, I'd like to say, you know, Jacob, I've already talked about, I'd like to say publicly how grateful I am for Jacob's friendship. And for all these years, Jacob and I have worked together in lots of different capacities over two decades now. And, and I'm just grateful for all the things he's done for our city and for, for the city of Charleston. And I know he's gonna do great things in Colorado, and I, and I know this is not goodbye, it's see you later. So, thanks, Jacob.
Thank you, Ms. Lassane.
Jacob's doing this on his own time today, I believe, I believe.
Anyone, anyone else before we move on? I'd like to say again that our losses, obviously, Colorado is gained, so we wish you well. And Mr. Morgan, we'll go ahead and you proceed with the meeting. I'm gonna turn the agenda over to you, if you would. Chris, you there?
All right, gotta get unmuted. There we go, sorry about that. Can you all hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna move into a brief update from Chloe Stuber on our engagement with the public on the plan. And then we'll move on to, from that, to our housing consultants, and then to our water and land use consultants. And then we'll have some public comment, as you can see from the agenda here. But Chloe, you wanna give us a brief update?
Yes, I will blast through this so that we have time for the updates about the housing analysis and water and land use analysis. And I know Andy, presenting the water and land use analysis, does need to leave at 4:30, so I'm gonna try and keep this quick. Engagement updates. Over 300 participants in city-led virtual listening sessions. We had a Spanish-language listening session on the Charleston Aqui Samos Facebook page. It was livestreamed, and it's since been viewed over 1,000 times. So that's getting great coverage. We've had over 200 participants in community-led meetings, and there are more scheduled for this month, so we expect that number to increase. We're close to getting 2,000 survey responses, the online survey. We have 200 printed surveys that are out being distributed now. And that, that total includes both the English and Spanish survey responses. 950 flyers, 300 postcards, and then our website has been getting good traction. We've had 7,700 unique views. So those are just some quick stats. And this top picture here is Art Pot Volunteers. This is the community organization that we partnered with to help with Spanish-language outreach. They did a community walk last week on John's Island, passing out surveys and getting the word out about the city plans. This is a group photo of them. And, and then the bottom photo there is the trial community that held on Facebook in early October. Just a quick update on where we are in the overall engagement schedule. So we have extended the deadline for serve, to complete the survey and to submit meeting notes from community-led meetings. So that deadline is now November 16th. And at this point, we're gonna be moving in to, we're closing out this sort of input gathering stage and going into drafting the plan. But during this time, we're not going to stop engagement. We're gonna continue engagement through City Plan Blog, sharing updates, findings, and topic-specific learning material. Just to, you know, keep, there's still plenty of opportunities for us to keep people informed about what's going on with the plan, what we're learning, and, you know, sharing other material as well, if people wanna dive deeper. We have our, for the first City Plan Blog post, we'll have a farewell letter from Jacob. And also, you can already watch this now on the Community Solutions Consulting Facebook page or the City Plan YouTube page, a short 15-minute interview with Jacob and our consultant, A.J. Davis, about the city plan and the importance of getting involved, and some farewell reflections from him. So that's, those are those updates. Any questions?
Any questions of Chloe Stuber?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, but Ms. Jacob, you go ahead.
These community-led meetings that are on your engagement schedules, those are things like... those are things like the Preservation Society and the Center for Air's Property and stuff like that. I attended the Preservation Society Coastal Conservation League one and then several of the ones that y'all did. And I'm really noticing a thought process based on demographics that are there. And I just wanna make sure that y'all feel we're getting, I know that our, our consultants were really hard on the ground. Are they, do they feel like they're getting good responses and good information to y'all? How do you feel about that? 'Cause I just, I just noticed that really whoever's there, you get a real interesting perspective. You know, almost a myopic look at this.
Right, right, yeah. So I don't have the complete list of community-led meetings here because that, that is still growing. But we did have a meeting with KJAM members last week. And as you mentioned, Center for Air's Property. And oh, what was another one recently? Community Solutions Consulting, A.J. and Eric have held two. That's catering to a, you know, a different demographic than what we saw with our listening sessions. And so there's, we're doing, through the community-led sessions, Fatika, A.J., and Eric are doing targeted outreach to different groups to host those to try and address some of those gaps in demographics. And they have been very clear in that that is a challenge that we're not gonna necessarily be able to overcome with this one engagement push. That, that's gonna take, some of, some of that, some of those gaps in participation is gonna take a longer, more, you know, ongoing relationship building and sort of rebuilding of trust that has been lost in the past. So, but they are going to, in December, at the end of this year, we'll have a report from them that will show us what representation we did get through, through these efforts, which have been multifaceted. And, you know, as you said, they've been out in, out in the community pounding, pounding the pavement. We, you know, we've really used our full toolkit at our disposal, even with the pandemic. But even with that, we're gonna, we know that we're gonna fall short with some demographics. And so they're going to present us with what we did get and some recommendations for how we can move forward addressing those gaps. So, yes, we're, we're, we're seeing as good of representation as we could have hoped for, given everything. But there's definitely still, still more work to be done.
I guess where I'm going is I don't want issues to appear weighted just because we didn't hear from a group. And, and the reason I'm saying that is I've attended many boards and even the planning commission for years, you know, representing something and have heard, like, there's nobody here from that neighborhood, so they must not be concerned. And that's not necessarily an immediate translation. So I just wanna, even, even one person telling us that there's an issue, we might wanna really dig into the issue just because we haven't reached the other 999 people that might have the same issue. I, I just, that really caught me in the last couple of sessions that I've been. So I just wanted to make sure that we all keep an open mind about that as we move forward. Thank you.
Good point, Ms. Jacobs. And again, I know the city does everything they can to get the participation up and they'll continue to do that, but good point and good comment. Anyone else have questions of Chloe? If not, Mr. Morgan, we'll move on with the agenda.
We are gonna move on to community data platforms. And is Anna or Remington or who's gonna start that presentation?
I'm here, Anna, I'm both here, actually. Hi, everyone, my name is Remy Beveridge and with me, Anna is somewhere. And Anna Tap is our lead data scientist and we're with Community Data Platforms. So here I am, Anna, if you wanna wave, everybody. Nice to meet you guys. I am going to start sharing and then we will get moving on our presentation. Okay. So as I said, we are Community Data Platforms and we are working on the Charleston Housing Analysis. And here is our overview. So today, we're gonna be talking about the scope of work and the deliverables that CDP will be giving to the city of Charleston. We're also gonna give a little bit more insight into CDP's overall process and some of the data that we leverage for these visualizations and some of the things that we will be giving. And then we'll do a little bit more of a deep dive into these different visualizations that we'll be giving to the city at the end of this process, which include an affordability analysis, a housing and transportation analysis, and a neighborhood analysis. Also, if anyone has any questions during this, feel free to stop me. I'll do my best to keep eyes on everybody, but I can only see so many people. So. And, oh, sorry. So one of the things that we wanted to talk through was what Charleston had asked of us at CDP and what role we are going to play in that. And so what we're going to do is generate data about the city's housing stock that was unavailable through traditional sources. And so what we, as a company, often do is we come in and we see, okay, here a city, a town, a municipality has this data, but they have these gaps and these gaps are really, really important to fill. And so we come in and we leverage different data sources in order to fill those gaps. We also have a wonderful team of data scientists and statisticians. So we apply expert knowledge of those two fields, ensuring the validity of the data provided. We have a really extensive QA process. So we aren't going to give you something that we aren't confident in. And then thirdly, we craft visualizations that illustrate housing in ways that are useful for planning decisions. It's great if you have a lot of data and maybe have a chart or a graph or something, but if it doesn't lead you into a decision or it doesn't help you make a decision, it's not really that useful. It's, it's great that you have this spreadsheet or something. And so what CDP really prides itself in is that we are able to give visualizations and we're able to give different pieces of information that are really going to be helpful as y'all are making this comprehensive plan and as y'all are making decisions. And we also wanna talk a little bit about what Charleston had asked of CDP. So one of those things was to collect and map current and past costs to buy and rent in the city at a parcel level. Another thing was to collect attributes related to the housing type, such as number of bedrooms, the units per building, and demographics. This is something else that CDP has leverage on, is that we have aggregated demographic data that we're able to show this city, so you guys can see patterns and different things that are happening. And then, like I mentioned, we have this craft visualization point and the create data visualization point are really similar. We want this data to be visualized in a way that, number one, you as planning commissioners can make a decision. But secondly, we want it to serve multi-purposes. As we are sho, as you guys show different community members and different stakeholders these things too. We, we don't want it to just be planning focus. We also want it to tell stories. We want to tell the story of the changing city. We want to tell the story of housing and transportation cost burdeness, which all of those will continue to talk about later. But does anybody have any questions right now?
Any questions from commission members?
Hey, I'm gonna keep going. And just a little bit more information. So what we are doing with the so-called housing analysis, what that means is that we will be handing the city a dataset with an internal data aggregation tool. And so the city will have all of our calculations, the valuations listed here, so the home valuations, the rental valuations, and the historical valuations, which we created using machine learning. And if that's a term that's not really familiar, we'll go into a little bit more of what that means in a later slide. We will also be delivering a method summary, which will just be an explanation into some of the more technical things that we did and how we leverage different data. And so more of these kind of fancy machine learning words, those will be explained and, and gone over in that method summary. Then, as I said earlier, we have three visualizations that we'll be delivering to the city. The first, an affordability analysis. The second, a housing and transportation analysis. And third, a neighborhood analysis, or changing city. We've kinda gone back and forth on the names. So if it's changing city or neighborhood analysis, it's referring to the same thing. Next, I think it's really important that we talk about some of CDP's process. I don't live in Charleston, neither does anyone on our team. And so we don't want to just come in and not understand the community. Obviously, you guys do, and this is home. And so we wanted to do our best to understand the process that we are jumping into. And so what CDP does is we have many stakeholder interviews. And so we had interviews with developers, with community organizations, with real estate professionals, housing agencies and professionals. We had input from all of this, a lot of the sessions that Chloe just mentioned, specifically the housing labs. So we listened to residents. We also have team collaboration. Chloe, Jim, and my team and I, we meet twice a week and go through all of these different things. And so you guys are our boots on the ground. As Chloe said, that there's people running all over and handing out surveys. You are our boots on the ground. And so we also collab with housing staff and with people on the GIS team. And then we also wanted to discuss a little bit of our data. And so we leverage data from the GIS and Assessor's Department, from Charleston City, from Berkeley County, from Charleston County. We also use a lot of our own commercial data, which pulls from commercial listings. We also, for the housing and transportation analysis, we use Charleston's placer data. And we also use census data. Next, here is that machine learning slide that I promised. And so the definition of machine learning is we use technology to create data that's not readily available through predictive formulas and algorithms. And some of our examples of what, if you can think about it, we input data, we train it through these predictive algorithms and these formulas, and then we have an output. And so what our outputs were are the home valuations, the rent valuations, and the historical valuations. But it's also really important that we know what's going in. And so what is going in? We have a lot of assessor sales data that we got from the city. But we also went through and essentially vetted all of that data to exclude non-normal sales, such as transfers. We also did a lot of web scraping, which I think is just a really fancy term for a lot of internet research. But we also made sure that the terms of service of the website allowed for that. They allowed us to take that. So what we web scraped was a lot of multifamily apartment complex data. So their bedrooms available, their pricing. We also web scraped the advertised homes for sale. And why these are really important for the home valuations and the rental analysis is that these are the best market indicators. The advertised sales and the advertise, the advertised home for sales and multifamily apartments for sale are the best indicators of the current market. We also use flood-related data. So we use the FEMA floodplains. We use the hurricane surge and we use the road closure data. And just a little bit of insight as to why the floodplains were important. Those are just, they're just layers, right? They're just places, but it is related to the insurance prices that people have to pay, depending, which obviously all of you know this. But it is related to the pricing and so that's how it affects the home valuations. A little bit more technical language, the methods that our team used for the machine learning. They started by looking at three different models called linear regression, random forest, and XG boost. And they went through multiple, multiple iterations. That's the other part that we probably should have put in the machine learning definition, is it's a very, very, very iterative process. And so you try one thing and you add another. You add another variable to see this is the most predictive subset that we could create. And so that happens over and over and over again. And so our team decided that the XG boost model was the most predictive and the most accurate. And so they used that for the home valuations. And then, like I said, our outputs, we will have the home valuations, the rental valuations, and the historical valuations. Doing it this way also allows for some ground truth. And so it allows some of the planning department to go through and say, okay, this totally makes sense. We can see that this house in this area and this neighborhood, that it matches, that this is what that looks like. And so it's not just people coming in from all over the country, as our team is. I'm currently in Michigan, but I also have Colorado connections. I'm, I, home for me is about two hours west of Denver and Boulder. And so we have people that can go ground truth all of this information. So that's a little bit more about machine learning. And now we're gonna move into our three visualizations. So just a quick reminder, we have our affordability analysis, our housing and transportation analysis, and our changing city or our neighborhood analysis. And so I would like to start with our goal of the affordability analysis, and it's to answer the following questions. So we know that the city wants to understand who is cost-burdened and where do these people live. We know that you want to know what type of homes that these people who are cost-burdened, what type of homes do they need? And then third, where does the current zoning allow for these homes to be built? And so I think that these questions really set up the actionable steps that this visualization will allow y'all to take. Because it would be great if we could say, okay, this amount of people are cost-burdened in Charleston. But if you don't know where they live, how can you help them? And then even if you do know where they live, what kind of housing do they need? And the example that I keep using is what if you have a single person that makes $40,000 a year? And so if they were non-cost-burdened, they would spend approximately $12,000 a year on their housing. Then you also have a family of four that's making the same amount. They're also making $40,000 and their 30% would also be $12,000 a year in housing. So those two groups of people, the one single person in the family, they need completely different housing. And appropriate and affordable housing for a single person looks completely different than for this family of four. So we also need to know who's cost-burdened, where do they live, and then what types of homes are going to be appropriate for them. Finally, we're going to talk about zoning. We know that that's a big part of the planning that's to be done. And so we have done an analysis to determine where the current zoning will allow for these homes to be built. The format that this is in, it'll be in an interactive tableau visualization, which is just a clickable tool. So you'll be able to see the answers to all of these questions really clearly. There will also be a clickable map to be able to say, I wanna focus in on West Ashley or I wanna focus in on James Island and see these different statistics for those individual areas. Next, we wanna talk about the housing and transportation visualization. So, to be clear, right here, this is a mock-up. It doesn't display real data. And it will, but it doesn't right now. And so we have these three different sections. We know we have cost-burdened, non-cost-burdened, and severely cost-burdened. And the reason for doing a deep dive into the housing and transportation visualization was to get a fuller picture of cost-burness in the city. So some of the stories that we have heard are some people being pushed out of Charleston City from the downtown areas and then having to potentially make up that cost that was saved in transportation costs. But we also want to look at what about the people that potentially are willing to pay the really high rent in downtown Charleston because they're able to walk to work? And so, again, the goal for the housing and transportation visualization was to provide a more complete picture of the different factors that really go into being cost-burdened. Then our final visualization is this neighborhood analysis visualization. And so we have spent, we've had many conversations with Jim and Chloe talking about the importance of telling the story of gentrification within the city of Charleston. And so we really landed on three different pieces that we wanted to talk about. We want education to be a part of this. We want the residents and the community members to be able to learn about the different factors that do influence gentrification and really understand how those play a role. We also wanted to give a neighborhood profile so that people would be able to say, okay, where does my neighborhood stand? Where, how are we doing? And so there will be a neighborhood profile part where all of these different factors, demographics, housing costs, permits, property value, and the change from residential to commercial, they will be able to see how their neighborhood has changed over time. Has their, have their housing costs raised, risen? Have their permits gone up? Has the property, have the value, property values increased? And then displacement risk will actually be called priority areas. And we will be able to see the different neighborhoods that are a priority area for displacement. And just to give a little bit more insight into the process of how we've come up with what this will look like, it's been a really collaborative effort between our team and Jim and Chloe, along with other housing and planning staff, staff members. And we also came, we started, our team did a lot of research into best practices of other people. best practices of other people that have studied gentrification and how they have um what sort of metrics they use in different playbooks um that they've used, and we've come with those. And then we um decided which were the best to use for Charleston and which would tell the story best for Charleston. Um, and we also had the insights from the housing labs that shaped the format and the purpose as well. Um, and that is all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'm going to stop sharing so that I can see any hands raised.
Thank you, ma'am. Any commission members have any questions? Awful quiet today, Ms. Jacobs, no questions?
No, I have a question, sir.
I knew you did. Go ahead.
Well, I um, I think she may have answered it, but I wanted to review um because they were talking about taking all the, the data, putting in an algorithm and getting out um an answer for us and then putting it in a graphic form that we can use to understand it, to make policy. And I think she used the term ground truths. Um, is that your vetting process to make sure that when the data goes in, there's some reality to the answer that goes out? But is that the vetting process for the algorithm?
Can I answer that, Remy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Anna here, um, what we do when we create a machine learning algorithm is we don't use all the data to train the algorithm, we hold out data. Um, so that's the primary source of ground truthing is that um a bunch of recent sales we did not put into the process of the algorithm, we held it out. And then we go back and we look at that, you know, those holdouts and we compare it to the output of the algorithm to see whether it did a really good job or not of predicting those. And we keep on going back and we keep on going back until that's right. And another technique that's often used is that holdout group. It's not always the same group every time. So you might, you might choose a different holdout group um every time, you know, so that you make sure that your model is rigorous and it's actually predicting what's going on in Charleston.
And then once you feel like you've got your algorithmic formula correct, do you put that holdout data in to see if you get the same answer?
Yeah, so you have that group and you say, okay, this is our truth, right? This is our ground truth, like these houses actually sold for this, but we didn't use that information to train the algorithm. So you create like an error assessment. So you compare what the algorithm produced against that. Um, they call it the test data set. Um, and then you'll do that a few times with some different test data set, and then you know your algorithm is very good.
And I'm sure this was part of the city's vetting system, but I don't know that I necessarily heard this. Where, what other cities have you run this algorithm on? How many, how many other places, locations have you been running this type of profile on?
I'd have to go back and ask my machine learning team. As community data platforms, Charleston is the first. Um, however, we did hire a team that is extremely competent. So if you're interested, I can go back and ask them um as a whole what their background is and let you know.
Yeah, I'm just curious because it's definitely, I mean, this isn't the first time I've seen this. I've seen this done for other things and it's definitely the way of the future. You just want to make sure that when you build that algorithm and you get an answer, you really know you got the answer. And I just want to understand how that's happening, so. Thank you.
Understood.
Good question, Ms. Jacobs. Any other questions?
Just one other thing I think I'd like to throw in um was that our team actually was really, really diligent in what they did. Um, so much so is they wanted to create different subsets um to make sure that they were getting the entire picture. And so they um, they created different algorithms that then matched together um for the county, for the city, for the municipality, depending on um where those different subsets were. Um, and so there was just a lot of detail and a lot of, again, iterations. I think that's my favorite word, connected to machine learning. Um, but there was a lot of due diligence done by our team, so.
Great, thank you. A lot of checks and balances in the process, so thank you. Um, if there's no other questions, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir. Well, um, then I thank you all so much uh and excellent info there. And uh, everybody is ready to go back to their stats classes now after all that too. I know it brings back my memories of stats class. Um, so um, we have now Andy Sternad with Wagner and Ball to give us some new info from our water and land use consultants. Andy?
Hey.
You go?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Nice to be with you all. I'm sorry, my camera's not working today. So um, I can see all of you. Glad to join you again. Uh, and thank you, CDP. That was an interesting presentation. It's been a while since we talked to you. I will share my screen too. Let me know that you all can see that.
Yes, sir. I, we can see it, I believe, I know I can.
Okay, great. Well, Chloe asked me just to quickly run through about three hundred slides here, so got a lot of maps to show you. I've tried to get through in the next, next couple of hours before dinner. This is a huge collection of information that we've built up at the city scale and at the individual focus area scale across the city. Um, what I'm going to show you now is just a couple of slides as an overview of our process, overview and reminder. Um, there's much more to share and, and much more to dig into. Um, and happy to direct it as we need to in questions. This is kind of the, the, getting close to the culmination of our work, and we'll be handing this analysis over to the city. It really is geared towards uh professional decision makers at the city. Um, some of this is, can be tailored for uh public explanation and should be made public, I think. Um, but, but it really is geared towards uh, towards the planning department. So this is how we see our work plugging in. Um, kind of at a base layer, the land and water analysis below the typical uh, the other more, more conventional, I guess, elements of the comp plan. Um, this is an important summary of, of what we've done and, and kind of gets at what it means. Um, we've studied the context, land and water context, everything from elevation and soils to how much rain, size and shape of the floodplain, sea level rise projections, and taken that as a, as a baseline data set. And then um through our analysis, we've started with the elevation. That's a kind of a guiding uh, a, a guiding fact about the land and water in Charleston, knowing how, how you relate to sea level and the other land levels around you. Then we've applied um your watershed impact. So how any one particular property impacts the properties around it based on its location, um upstream, downstream, et cetera. And how rainfall um and tide uh create those relationships between properties. And then finally, we did an environmental overlay. So we looked at other ecological considerations, especially on higher ground and at the very low fringes that should have a special consideration, things like marsh migration at the edges, the, at the water's edge, and some special high ground characteristics uh like forests, existing forests and tree cover uh that should be uh, that, that provide an additional ecological benefit. And so as we play that out kind of in section, here's the, again, just the summary of, of our process, context, elevation, then watershed, environment. We, we divided the city um or, or the, these kinds of elevation zones came out of the analysis. There's a, there's a tidal flood risk zone up to a certain elevation. Then there's a, what we're calling the adapt zone, which is um a, uh, an area that's an elevation range that's subject to rainfall flooding from above and also tidal drainage impacts coming up from below. That's also an area that um has the most potential, maybe the most risk, but also the most potential to adapt over time. And then there's a high ground, relatively small portion of the city that's less impacted um by rainfall flooding or storm surge. This is kind of the upper bound of storm surge across the city as well. Um, and there are various things you can do, uh, projected to do across these zones. Um, it's not to say one or the other shouldn't be inhabited. It's kind of a gradient of, of opportunity and strategy. Overland on these elevation zones is um vulnerability, watershed size, um kind of extent of tide, which sometimes extends quite far inland. Um, vulnerability has to, is really important here. That has to do with how many properties are downstream from you, so who your runoff is impacting. Um, and then, like I said, some environmental overlays, ecology and importantly soils. One thing we find is the best soils for water infiltration are the highest up in the watersheds. Just important, important opportunity. So um, kind of a regional overview here, we divided the city into seven watershed areas. So that's John's Island, James Island, inner and outer West Ashley, the peninsula, Daniel Island and Kane Hoi. Uh, then we looked at the area of Charleston within the urban growth boundary and then, and overlaid the area of the floodplain. That's what you see kind of in this uh lighter green color is floodplain extent. Looked at the rainfall, um rainfall rate prediction, kind of a, a storm surge uh elevation, which is the maximum kind of worst case scenario for a category three is seventeen feet. And then overlaid a, a sea level rise projection, also a gradient, nothing set in stone. And that, those data inputs uh resulted in the elevation zones. So like I was describing before, a tidal risk zone, an adapt zone, a portion of which is subject to compound flooding. That's the zone where you have rainfall from above and tide from below interacting. Um, the top of the adapt zone is more or less equivalent to storm surge risk. And then you have the high ground, which is relatively safe outside of the hundred-year floodplain and above category three storm surge. Um, as you play that out across the city, you see that um there's not that much uh green relatively, and a lot of it is outside the urban growth boundary. We'll get to some of those, what that means a little bit more. Um, so in addition to the elevation ranges, we overlaid watershed types. Um, basically identified three, two, two broad watershed types, small and large. And then large breaks down into two subcategories. An inland watershed, which contains some higher ground in this upstream condition. And then large tidal watersheds, which stay relatively low throughout the whole watershed. That's something like James Island Creek, where the tide extends far inland. Uh, large, uh, large inland watershed with some high ground might be something um like on the Kane Hoi Peninsula, or maybe even the upper reaches of Church Creek. Um, maybe also some upper reaches of Bergen Creek and sort of into the Maybank Corridor on John, on John's Island. Um, these have different uh implications for properties surrounding this upstream and downstream relationship. We, within those floodplains, we analyzed uh vulnerability, we, using the same methodology as the vulnerability analysis from uh Niemack Fernleaf. So their methodology was basically to consider properties built before BFE requirements as more vulnerable. So they're, they're likely not built to the same elevation as, as uh modern development. And um and then properties that were built after BFE requirements, but that are still in um newly mapped portions of the floodplain. So those two uh types of properties together um generate the, it's a property's risk. And we analyze that in relation to other properties within the watershed. And we resulted at this map. So this is a kind of that familiar zone, tidal risk zone, adapt and high ground, but it's now split into low impact and high impact. So low impact means um that a cer- a certain property has a relatively low impact on its surroundings. Its runoff does not impact as many vulnerable properties. A high impact range indicates that a property is in a position to contribute significantly to flooding surrounding it. So for example, um, this dark green is high ground, low impact. That's what you might consider the safest, lowest impact place for development. Whereas um whereas this next lightest green indicates that while that's still high ground, property in that zone has more impact on the downstream watershed beneath it. So it, it makes sense if you look somewhere like Church Creek, Church Creek Basin, you see a lot of that lighter green color. That means that the properties, the, the land in this upstream condition of Church Creek will impact everything downstream flowing out to the outlet. Um, and I, I think you can kind of take it from there. So with, within each zone, there's a, this is really a, a way to help prioritize where adaptation is most effective. We also found that the elevation ranges for those zones, tidal, adapt and high ground, change slightly across the city. It's not all one datum in every place. That has to do with local characteristics and not so much of, of the tide. You see how the tidal, uh, the top of the tidal risk zone is about the same within a foot or two all the way across the city. But this adapt zone changes by, by a couple of feet, specifically on Kane Hoi. Uh, but that has to do with the localized conditions of the watershed and what's flowing downstream. Also the amount and of, of development uh above on that high ground. Um, so this merits a, a little bit more study. I won't go into too much more detail, but just note that those benchmark levels vary slightly across the city. So I'll go back a slide. So when you see map like this, this is accounting for that variation. So the yellow adapt zone means slightly different things per place in the city. It ma- means a slightly different elevation. Then we did uh the ecological overlay of that third part. So we took into account the uh baseline landscape pathology from coastal edge to the floodplain itself, to the upland, and then to this suburban, uh, urban interface. From the lowest edge, uh, we mapped marsh migration. This is in a three-foot sea level rise scenario. You see the orange is marsh that is projected to be lost, basically drowned out by that amount of sea level rise. And the blue is area that um the, a wetland would tend to migrate towards. Um, we've done another level of analysis, which I, I won't get into here. Uh, basically tracking what those blue areas impact. It's mostly undeveloped area currently. It's a lot of other types of woody wetlands versus the open marsh. Um, so that's promising, I think, but you see especially, for example, areas of Kane Hoi, which, which are projected to experience some of this marsh migration. It would be uh, it would be wise, for example, in areas like that, to consider the benefits of protecting marsh and protecting where that marsh might go, in terms of storm surge buffering, stormwater sinks, things like that. Again, not to say that anything is off limits per se, um, just that certain special characteristics should be taken into account. Another part of that ecological overlay was a tree canopy analysis. So this is a map of tree canopy change kind of from green to red between two thousand and twenty fifteen, red being areas where tree canopy was lost and green being uh areas of tree canopy gain. Um, tree canopy is especially important. For example, moving up towards Francis Marion, the high ground covered in forest here is limiting the impact on the properties below it, kind of the lower, the lower elevation areas of Kane Hoi. That's an important relationship to consider as development is projected there. Similar condition in the Maybank Corridor. Uh, ecological benefit on the high ground is really important. And finally, a soils overlay. So here you see in green uh these hydrologic group A soils that absorb the most, potentially absorb the most stormwater runoff. Those are the sandy soils, those high beach ridges correspond um in many cases to higher ground. Then as we move down towards yellow and then this kind of beige color, um soils less inclined to absorb water, more inclined to runoff to, to your neighbor. Um, so what does this all start to mean? Um, and this is staying at the high-level regional scale. Uh, our analysis goes through all of those steps for each part of the city at a much finer grain. I, I can click through some of those maps if you like, just to see what that looks like, what the scale looks like. Um, but we're, we're looking at basically grow, defend, adapt and reserve different strategies that mean different things as you move through these elevation zones and consider all of the ecological impacts. So we're trying to create the kind of uh, the menu of options and tools that the city can, can choose how to implement. We won't be making any recommendations for, for how, specifically how to implement these things. Leave that up to the city, its comp plan process and stand available to support that. But uh, we're getting to the point now where it's, where it's up to you and up to the um city staff to um, to really put these, put these ideas in, in practice out in space. There's, this, this, this slide deck really does have about three There's, this, this, this slide deck really does have about three hundred slides, so I can keep clicking through as much as you like, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. And what an important part of this process, uh, dealing with the uh, water and the land use regarding to the water and effects of the water in our areas. So um, commission members, questions? Any questions, commission members? If not, I, I, I guess we're good, and we appreciate the information. We know there's a lot of slides, and I'm sure these will be available to us. If, I wanted to look at this, some of this stuff later. Will you share some of this, uh, so I can pull it up later on or anything like that?
Absolutely. And um, this, this was part of a presentation we gave to planning, city planning staff last week on Wednesday. Um, so I can send this link again. And you also please feel free to share.
If they're, yeah, if they'll share that with the commission members, we greatly appreciate it. And thank you for your work and for your information. We look to hear from you again. Again, if there's no questions, Mr. Morgan, I, I think we have um, is there a correspondence or a public comment? I guess that's where we're at.
Correct. And we have one person, I believe, Chloe, who signed up to speak?
Yes, Cashin Drole. So I'm going to enable her microphone now. Okay, Cashin.
Good, thank you, Chloe. Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great. Um, good afternoon. It's Cashin Drole with Historic Charleston Foundation. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the planning commissioners for your focus on the city plan and um, and starting from scratch and really focusing in on um, the issues of, of housing and climate change. Um, Charleston has changed dramatically um, in the last ten years since a full um, comprehensive plan was worked on in, in the century five plan. We're very energized and encouraged by the level of public engagement so far in the city, in the city plan and also by the reports from the consultant team today. And we are really looking forward to being a partner of the planning commission and of the city to taking um, and taking part in the development of the new plan. Um, like I said, we're really happy to see an emphasis on housing and resiliency. Those are two of our focus areas at Historic Charleston and on which we have worked closely with the city for a number of years. Um, HCF remains committed to the Dutch Dialogues Charleston um, final report. And I would encourage the commissioners to, to dust off that, that final report and, and revisit recommendations made therein and incorporating those recommendations into the city plan. Um, at the conclusion of the survey process and, and when the consultants have made and submitted their final reports, um, HCF looks forward to sending the planning commission and planning staff our final thoughts and recommendations on the city plan. And um, those thoughts will mainly be focused on the natural resources, cultural resources, land use and resiliency elements of the plan. Um, thank you for this opportunity to be involved, and we look forward to working with y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Drole, and, and thank you. And pass the word on to your people. We appreciate always y'all's input from your organization um, to help our ma- our city ma- become so much better. Y'all are a big part of that, so thank you as well. Um, Chloe, any other uh, comments?
No, that's it.
All right, Mr. Morgan, um, does that conclude the agenda?
Yes, it looks like Ms. Limpas has had something she wanted to say.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Limpas, if you go ahead.
Yeah, Charlie, thank you, Christopher and Chloe. Um, what is our timeframe on us being able to review this information? And, and with what you're planning it to do with council and with us?
So in coming months, probably in uh, November, December, I guess we're in November now, probably more like. We should have a lot more actual info from our consultants on this, as well as some drafts of different sections of the plan from our staff. Um, we hope to ultimately have a full draft of the plan uh, by uh, late January, early February. Um, and then begin meetings between you all and ultimately city council, and then uh, get it to city council by uh, March as a draft. Uh, that, that is the tentative schedule right now. It shifted a little bit as we've, you know, seen the enormous level of work we have ahead of us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of uh, commission members? Just reminding everyone that uh, it looks like our plan meeting for uh, this month is on uh, the eighteenth. First, I don't think we have anything before that.
No.
And uh, the next, the next plan update will be when?
I believe it's uh, was it December? I don't have those right in front of me.
Chloe, do you know that? Uh, just a week.
Yeah. Let me pull that up.
December seventh.
December seventh?
Yes. Monday, December seventh.
Okay, great.
And then the joint council PC workshop is on January twenty first.
And that one may, depending on when we have the draft of the plan ready to go.
If there's no other uh, questions from um, commission members or comments, we'll go ahead and stand adjourned. I appreciate everyone's time today and look forward to seeing y'all on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you all.